Okay, we'll call the meeting of the August 31st, 2011, meeting of the Edina Planning Commission to Order. The first item of business is the roll call. Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Platter?
Here.
Commissioner Stockton?
Here.
Commissioner Carver?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Forrest?
Here.
Commissioner Stefani?
Here.
Commissioner Rottle?
Here.
Here. Okay, the first item of business, approval of the agenda. You received the agenda. Any objections or changes to be made to the agenda? Hearing none, we will proceed. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. First item, the minutes of the August 17th, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any questions or changes to be made to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. I'll move approval. Sir, second?
Second.
Moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Very good, we're just moving right along here. Next item is community comment. During community comment, we will invite residents to share new issues or concerns that haven't been considered for the past 30 days by the commissioner, which are not slated for future consideration. Is there any public comment at tonight's meeting? Doesn't look like there's much public comment. There's not much public either. Glad to have you here. Okay, public hearings. First item under public hearings is matter B-11035. This is a variance for St. Peter's Lutheran Church and JMS Homes at 3713 Fuller Street, seeking a lot width variance. Chris?
Thank you.
Do we have new software? Is that what's going on here?
Oh, yeah. I'm sure. The subject property is located at 3713 Fuller Street. It is a vacant lot. It is south of Fuller. It is just south of St. Peter's Lutheran Church, which is located at 5421 France Avenue South. The variance is for a lot width variance. It is for 15 feet in width. The church has owned the lot since 2003, and they hope to sell it off now to have a new home built on it. The church also owns two lots to the west, as well as their parking lot that's on the corner of Fuller and France Avenue. Those properties are all tied to a proof-of-parking agreement and tied to the church, so they can't be sold off individually. However, the subject lot actually was purchased after that proof-of-parking agreement and has no encumbrances on it, and may be sold as a separate lot. However, because there was a house that had been on the property, it was a subdivided lot, the house was removed in 2003. Because the lot is currently non-conforming in terms of width, it's 60 feet in width instead of 75 feet in width, it does require 15-foot lot width variance. If the home, if a new home would have been built a year, within a year after the home would have been removed, this would not have been an issue, because it would have retained its non-conforming status. But now that the lot has been vacant for this many years, it can't simply be sold off without the benefit of a lot width variance. A building plan has been provided by the developer who wishes to purchase the property. This is a survey showing the proposed footprint of the building, which meets all of the lot coverage requirements, the setback requirements. This is a building plan that they are proposing to put on the site, the home that they propose to build on the site, which also meets all of the requirements. This would be the basement, floor plan, main floor, and second floor. The primary issue is the proposed development plan, a reasonable use for the site. Yes, staff believes the proposal is reasonable for four reasons. The proposed use is a permitted use in the R1 Single Dwelling Unit District. The lot is appropriate in width, given the adjacent lot widths and lot configurations within the neighborhood. Majority of the lots near and around it are 60 feet in width, some are less. There are some 40-foot wide lots also in the neighborhood. The home demonstrated would maintain the character of the neighborhood and would conform to the ordinance's requirements. Is the proposed variance justified? Will it relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance's requirements? Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable. The lot was developed with a single-family home previously. It had been demonstrated by the plan that a new home may be built within the current standards required by the city. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly zoned property, and that are not self-created? The unique circumstance is that the property was acquired by the church with a home on it. However, it was in such disrepair that the home was removed to reduce blight in the neighborhood. The church no longer desires to own the property, with the selling not affecting the status of the church property. The variance would allow reconstruction on the property with a new conforming, single-family home. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? No, the proposed improvements would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The improvements would replace a home that had previously occupied the lot. Staff recommends approval based on the following findings: that with the exception of the variance requested, the proposal would meet the required standards and ordinances for the R1 Single Dwelling Unit District. The proposal would meet the required standards for a variance, because the proposed use of the property is reasonable, as it is consistent with the comprehensive guide plan. The request is reasonable, given that the home had occupied the lot in the past. The lot widths of the subject properties are, of the subject property is consistent and similar to those near it. The proposal is in harmony with the intent of the ordinance, as it will replace a home that had occupied the lot in the past and was originally subdivided for that purpose. The unique circumstances are that the property was acquired by the church with the home subsequently torn down, with no option now for redevelopment of the lot, without the benefit of a lot width variance. Approval of the variance is subject to the following conditions: that, subject to staff approval, the site must be developed and maintained in substantial conformance with the plans, unless modified, and then also a survey date stamped, August 1st, 2011. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Forrest?
Uh, I'll wait.
Okay, Chris, I've got a question while we're waiting. I'm looking at the slide that has the picture of the lots, and I think you had that slide up there. It shows 3713 in sort of the orange crosshatch. Next to it's 3717, and on the other side, 3709. 3721 has a house on it. And I can't tell from the drawings, if we grant this variance, what happens? Are we taking space out of 3717 or 3709?
Neither.
Neither?
No. It's a standalone 60-foot wide lot. The house to, or the property to, the east actually has had a new house built on it.
Oh, so we're not okay.
And that's owned by the church. And the property then to the west is a separate 60-foot wide platted lot that remains owned by the church.
This is a duh moment. We're keeping the 60-foot lot, we're just requesting a variance to go from a 75-foot standard down to a 60-foot lot.
Correct. Nothing changes with the lot. It's the language of the code that requires the variance.
I hope somebody has an intelligent question to ask me. Commissioner Fisher?
I didn't raise my hand, because I thought mine was intelligent. I just wanted to make that clear. In the text, it talks about the church actually purchased this property and took down what was termed a blighted house. Is that, and that was in 2003?
Right. That's correct.
So, had they just left the blighted property there and tore it down six months ago, we wouldn't be here. This would just be...
Correct. If they would have torn it down and gotten a building permit within a year after they tore down the old home, there would be, the house next door was built immediately after they tore down the house on that 60-foot wide lot. It's just a matter of the fact that it's been a year or more than a year after.
And we've actually granted this type of variance not that long ago in another part of town, didn't we? Where they...
We have.
Took the house down. It was down for a while, but generally in context with the neighborhood, it's just...
Right.
Okay. Just, I will just make a note that, for future reference, that, could we get, when you do this, because Chair Grable pointed out the aerial photo, could we get, like, when you do the aerial, do you do the aerial photo, or is it part of the applicant's?
No, we can do that. We do that.
You do that?
Yes. Any way you'd like, we can do it.
Just, for me, I'm totally a picture guy. Like, if you can get, like, the neck, the street on each side, you know? So, I didn't have the common sense to actually look at the address, so I'm looking at the picture, trying to figure out where it is, and I tried to drive there tonight, and I was, like, on the other side of France, driving around. Like, wow, this isn't the right church.
Absolutely. Looking at a vacant lot is...
Now, I know, I could have looked at the address. I get that.
Yeah. It's difficult just to go out and look at a vacant lot.
And I think, what was interesting about this is the context, when you drive in there, is completely different than what you would imagine, looking at this aerial photo. And they're not always like that, but that would be great, if in the future we could...
Absolutely.
Great, thanks.
And perhaps for Commissioner Fisher's packet, we could have just pictures and no words.
Yeah. The more pictures and fewer words, it all works better. A set of color strands would be great.
Commissioner Forrest?
So then, 3721 is still owned by the church?
It is.
Okay. Just trying to orient myself as well, so...
Other questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Chris. Would the proponent, either the church or the builder, wish to make any comments?
I have a...
Please give us your, give us your...
Did that arrive? Good.
I don't think so. Did he send it to you? Oh, okay. Well, we're gonna get, we'll get your address here.
So I can do it either way. Nope, no problem. Should have been emailed over.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's interesting, first, again, my name's Jeff Shane Wetter with JMS Custom Homes, and it's nice to be back in front of you tonight. And I think some of the questions you asked will be answered by this presentation as well. So, I'm gonna go rather quickly, in the hope that I'm not redundant. But, we all know that St. Peter's Lutheran Church and School owns the significant land holding on this block, and we're here tonight, helping the church seek your approval for a variance at 3713 Fuller Street. As you know, our company has a significant history in Edina over the last 25 years, and sampling of some of the addresses and some of the homes that we've had the privilege of building here in Edina, and we're quite proud of those homes, as well as some of the subdivision and land activity that JMS has enjoyed throughout the state of Minnesota. This certificate of survey is the oldest piece of recorded data that the city has in their files relative to the church, and this dates back to November of 1955. And you can see on the bottom of the screen here, Fuller Street, and as you might imagine, the lot we're talking about sits on the south side of Fuller Street, within the plat. The site history shows Fuller running from the top of the screen to the bottom here, and this being the intersection of France and Fuller. And the existing parking on the right, Commissioner Forrest's question about the property here that the church still owns, and then the green highlighted property, which is the property in question, as well as the two brand-new homes that are substantially similar to the scope of the home that we're proposing to build as well. Is you, here about 3713, the house that used to be there was built in 1954, some 57 years ago. The church acquired that home on April 16th of 2003 for investment, and also to protect their investment on Fuller. The, I would agree with staff that it was actually somewhat of a blight to the neighborhood, and there were some repair orders and some work orders, and a new roof done in 2001. And then there's a series of some police reports about some of the tenants' activities that the church viewed as inappropriate, and I think the Edina Police Department can confirm those reports. So, it was determined that, let's just demise, so the property was disassembled, and the well was sealed back in 2007, and this was actually a project that the Boy Scouts Eagle Group helped with the cleanup of the site. And now, in 2011, JMS Custom Homes is hoping to build a new home on the site that'll look something like the home that's now on the screen before you. This home was architecturally designed for us by Alexander Design, and it is a project that's ready to go. The variance test, as you heard from staff, does this relieve practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance? And is this process consistent with the reasonable use here in the Fuller Street neighborhood? And we absolutely believe that it's completely reasonable. It's a new conforming home. It's not a McMansion. It actually fits on the lot with no variances. And we think this is just a continued activity that continues to stimulate healthy redevelopment and housing stock replacement here in Edina, which we're very proud to be a part of. The second test says, will this variance correct extraordinary circumstances that are applicable to this property, but not other properties in the immediate area? And obviously, with the other new homes, both to the two lots east of this, as well as the five lots immediately south of this, over the last few years, we think we're both in context with the neighborhood, and had it not been for this gap of time between the demolition of the home and today's construction activity, eclipsing that 365 days, we'd be in a position that none of us would need to be here tonight. So, we think that it's because of this gap in time that we need to contemplate a permission or ask for a waiver to this situation, and be it not for time, we wouldn't be here. The third test is, are we in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance? And absolutely. It's a single-family home, rather small in scale by new construction standards in Edina, and the scope of our work is planned to be very similar, although just a little smaller than the home immediately next door, which I have on the screen for you, that's sold earlier this year. And that is an actual photograph of the actual home that sits immediately to the east. And I'm sure that when you drove by checking this out, you saw that home. And it actually is on its second owner now. That home traded hands earlier this year. The survey for the home that was built by a different builder in 2009, and that is the site immediately east that I just had the picture up. This is the site plan that we had Carlson McCain Engineering prepare for our project on the 3713 site, and it does shadow the house that's immediately to the east, as far as setback and massing and so forth. This is the home that is two doors to the east, 3705, and this was for a project in 2010. So, the variance does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and the property owner, St. Peter's Lutheran Church, who today owns this particular parcel of record, feels that the 3713 project that we're contemplating is very consistent with 3705 and 3709. So, tonight, in conclusion, we're hoping that you would approve the request of St. Peter's Lutheran Church for this application, that you would continue the leadership in the community and encourage new construction to continue providing vital housing for us here in Edina, and continue influencing and supporting that investment in the community. And I am here to answer any questions you might have. And there are two representatives of the church here as well, that if you have any questions, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. Shane Wetter. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Forrest?
Yeah, my question is, when you look at that lot compared to the home that's already built to its east, that lot is significantly higher in its topography. It's about three to four feet higher than the base, you know, the ground floor of the house to the east. So I guess my one concern would be, it would be vertically much more outstanding than the other properties. I think the other house is a one-story, maybe one half, but I think it's a one-story.
The home immediately to the east I have on the screen in front of you, and...
That's the one that sits lower. And then the other one that's more equivalently situated is a one-story, that's two doors to the west, if I'm oriented correctly.
The existing home that the church still owns?
Right, right.
That's adjacent to their parking lot.
Right. That's, I think, it's a one-story or one and a half, I think.
Yes, I'd call it a story and a half. It's two lots to the west of this particular lot. And as far as, if you think of the, we're at 3713 as proposed. If you look at the 3709 picture, they actually dropped the garage from a construction technique, sort of like a split entry. So there's several stairs out of this garage into the first floor of the house, and you can kind of see how that front walk curves around, and each step in this front walk drops about eight inches, and by the time you get to the driveway, you make up several feet. You can imagine that the first floor of the house is almost mid-drift with this garage door. What we've done with our particular lot to address the way they graded and sited this site is, first, the roof peak elevation of our home would be very similar to this roof peak elevation. The second thing we did is, rather than fill the lot line or create a retaining wall situation because of the way the topography rises, we created a daylight set of windows throughout the first floor of the home that we're contemplating. So we're actually using the house as our retaining wall, if you would, and putting natural light into the lower level. And I did not include in our variance application a lot of detail, other than the elevation of our home. But I suspect that, Chris could help me out, if you want to look at a full blueprint, because there was a full plan in... There, there's the elevation, but you can see on the side, this glass right here. So we took the existing grades and respected them. We're not changing them at all. And then, as the lot fell, we simply used the side of the house and took the opportunity of that dropping grade to put daylight windows on the side. And it should work out really quite well, with very, no retaining walls.
I guess what my concern is more, the, is again, the scale and massing of the property, because when you look at the lot, as it currently is graded, there's a dramatic increase in the altitude elevation, in that, right next to the existing home, on, as you enter into the 3713 property. So it would be on the right side of that photo. And it's somewhat reflected in the topographical measurements, if you follow those lines around as well. And I, so my concern, again, if, when you say the roof peak elevation would be about the same, is that the building's roof peak elevation, or the actual altitude of the roof peak?
The actual altitude. Measuring food above sea level.
So it will be a shorter, it'll be a significantly, it'll be a house that's about the main, and when you said first floor, that meant the lower level, the basement level, right? For the daylight windows?
Correct.
Yeah, and that's...
I think we can answer these questions with specificity, because I have the survey for the house next door, right here, and I have our proposed survey right here. And one of our motivators is trying to be efficient and create as much value as possible. We would want to minimize the grading and disruption of the site. So, we also respect, for instance, the grade, and this is a topographical line that's coming past this existing tree, and this grade coming past these trees, and the elevation of those trees at their base is noted there. So we all would agree that the Fuller Street elevation is cast in stone, and so we've basically followed the existing grades, as you can see here, to minimize grading and respect that grade. And then here, between the existing house and our house, we matched these elevations as far as opening, so that there wouldn't be grading or retaining walls required. As you look at their elevation, and forgive me, it's the, their, their survey, the top of block is proposed at 901, and the front entryway at 903. And assuming that they built to those elevations, we're proposing this darkest contour coming right through our, here, that's a 902. So we're a foot lower than their front door. Chris, am I accurately...
Well, I have 903, actually. On, at the, at the front of the building, it says 903, on the survey that we have, that you provided for this property. But, that's, that's...
Which would make, which would make our front yards identical.
Is your ground, but is your ground level going to be at the same starting point as their ground level? Because the lot is three to four feet higher from, it goes up very rapidly, and that's, that was my concern, because it just contributes to the height of the building.
Right. And they, they both do that. The difference is, if you look at this picture of the house that we're talking about to the east, this, this grade right here generally just keeps going to the west. So, the side yard and this front yard are very similar in grade. The rise from the street to the front door are both proposed to be virtually identical. The difference here is they cut down their fill and dropped their garage. So, just a little bit different approach to how they graded their site, and that may have been influenced by what was to their east, not so much what was to their west. But our, our common lot line between the 3709 and the 3713 match with no significant grading, and that was by design.
Well, when you look at it straight on from the street, it's at least two and a half to three feet higher. Where the house starts, the grass is two and a half, there's a hill right next to the existing home, going up onto this property. And that's why, looking at it, I thought, okay, that's immediately going to add two to three feet onto this structure's overall height.
Intuitively, I get it, and I think you're, you're exactly right.
And the oyster bars, whatever they call them here, same, same thing.
When you just look at it, you go, your concern makes a lot of sense. When you look at our survey here, you'll see that we're matching these grade lines in the front yard, and the side yard, we're not filling, we're actually using that side yard to drop, to meet the neighbor, rather than retain, to move away from them. And that created an opportunity. So we're using the house as the transition, and the side yards that abut each other are gonna have the exact same grade and the exact same elevations.
So the front entry will be at the exact same elevation as the front entry as of the other home?
I believe, I believe I can answer that with a yes.
Difficult without removing...
I know.
On the soil.
It, there'll be, there'll be a swale between the two homes, and the side yards between the front yard and the rear yard on both homes is dropped. And they may have dished out some fill on this lot when they built the house to the east, but they got daylight windows out of their side yard by doing such. So we're just copying that construction technique, so both homes will have opposing daylight windows, and therefore, no retaining walls. So the, the top of block on both homes will be... So the top block on both homes will be virtually identical. And I think, I think the front entries will be, the top block is 901 on the neighboring house, and the front entryway is 903, right where I'm pointing on their W. Brown survey here. And then our survey, this is a 902, and will have some rise to this front door, but there isn't another contour line. So, hold on.
It is indicated on the survey you provided here is 903 as well, so...
I think it says 903, right where it says FFE in the middle of that. It's hard to read, but I believe they are the exact same elevation. If they aren't, they're within inches, definitely.
Okay.
Thank you.
But you are not adding grade to build the house up higher? You're taking the lot as it is?
Yes.
Other questions, other proponent?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody from the church wish to address any issues?
Good evening. My name is Jim Revelle, and currently serve as the...
Would you use the side podium, please, or that?
My name is Jim Revelle. I currently serve as the Congregational President of St. Peter's Church. And I don't have anything to add, but would certainly entertain any questions that the commission has.
Questions of the church? No questions of the church. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone, does anyone else wish to speak? As there are no other people approaching the podium, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. We can now bring the matter up to the commission here for comments. Anyone have any comments on this proposal? All right, there are no comments. Do we have a motion to put forth? Commissioner Fisher?
Why am I the one that always gets to make the motion? I will move approval of the variance request with the staff, which is a staff recommendation based on the staff findings and conditions. Do I need to read them all off, or can we just take them off the...
The conditions as set forth in the staff report. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve variance request B-11-05, subject to the findings and the conditions as set forth in the staff report. Is there any other, is there any discussion, further discussion on this matter? Commissioner Forrest?
I guess I would like some assurance that they do build so that their front, main floor elevation is around, or very, very close to the main floor elevation of the existing home to the east of this property. Because it's such a marked difference in, you know, my visual assessment of the level of the two lots, that I'm a bit concerned about it being very tall, especially since most of the homes in the neighborhood are a story and a half or so. So that's just a concern.
I guess I would, if I might, would you require, would we begin to require developers to remove grade in order to, I mean, are we stepping into a place where we're asking developers to remove grade? I mean, there was a concern, there has been a concern in the city in the past about developers adding grade to give height to buildings, and the council acted on that. And that's where we got the, you know, the one foot or two foot above the existing grade and so on and so forth. Are we now going to start requiring them to remove grade?
Why should we have to require them to remove grade when they say it's already, that's, it's accommodated within their plans, first of all? Secondly, then perhaps, I mean, this is a situation that's not, because there's a variance involved, there is the option of addressing certain situations with other additional conditions. I'm, I hate to muddy things up with all of that, but I am really, I'm concerned, after looking at the property, that the one house that's already built to the east already is, stands out significantly in the neighborhood because of its height. And I guess I'm concerned because a lot of, there's been a lot of feedback in the community about the increasing heights of the homes, especially in that part of town where they dominate. Now, the good part is, there's nothing built next door, another house next door, and I presume it will go and be a very similar style. But again, I don't like to muddy it up. So maybe I'm just voicing this concern for the record, Mark. But it's, visually, it seems, without digging the first floor down, not just digging out along the basement side to provide daylight windows, it really seems like there's going to, they would have to do a lot of excavation to bring the front door down to the other door, but I'm not sure.
Other comments? Commissioner Fisher?
I guess I would look at it as a house on a hill will be taller than a house that's lower on the hill or on the flat. And the way I would, I guess I would be real careful that if we're going to grant a variance, it's based on all of the context of the lot width and the context of the neighborhood. And as long as there are no variances being requested, you know, they're building a house that fits, conforms to all of our rules, which as far as I can tell, that's what they're going to do. To me, I wouldn't want to add anything to the variance in that way, because it's, I just wouldn't be comfortable with that.
I know we've done that in the past, though, when variances have come forward and the conditions have been added in certain situations that seem somewhat abruptly divergent from the original request. And is that a good idea? You know, I agree with you. It seems somewhat excessive. On the other hand, it's not a gradual slope that where this hill, this lot is just higher. It's just that it had been graded in the past, so there's a ridge that goes up to the property that's in question. And so I guess that's just a concern of mine, that it's changing that neighborhood a bit, but it's not that developed on that side of the street either.
Is there a way to do it that we're not requiring what elevation they build it at, but you could, as one of the conditions, just say the intent, which is what the developer's saying, is the intent is to the best of their ability being level. But I don't want them to have to come back if, as they get into construction, they realize it's, you know, six inches or whatever. But what I've heard him say is there's no retaining wall, there's no change in elevation. It's just, I know things change when you get out there a little bit, and you wouldn't want to kind of make them go through the whole process again. But I don't disagree with sort of making it clear in our recommendation that that's, it's important to try to the extent they can to keep that somewhat level.
Yeah, I like that idea, because, but, and also perhaps by doing the daylight windows on there, it's going to make that rise look less abrupt from the street and more like a natural hill, too. So that could be possible.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Just add a little bit to that. I'm going to disagree a little bit with both Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Forrest. Right now, we're looking at survey data that seems to indicate very similar elevations on both of the parcels, if I'm understanding it correctly.
They are indicated on the...
Am I looking at the wrong drawings then? Is there, this is, oh, and this one over here. So I don't have, we don't have the elevation for the...
It was on the screen, if you could read that.
Can we look at that again?
Well, that was the one that was 903.
The edge of the property is at 901 and a half.
This is where you have to get our younger commissioners to actually tell us what the numbers are.
It's 901 and a half at the edge of the property, where it abuts the house to the east. So right here, right at the property line, because it slopes up this way.
Wait, so this one?
This is, I'm looking at this one?
So it does the front of three, too?
And then this is, this is 903.1, this is 901.5. So it's, at that point, it's not that, you know, it's only a couple, a couple of feet, so...
But the policy that's been expressed by the city council is that builders are not to add grade to, except there is, I think there is a limit, they can add some grade, but the policy is not to add grade. The proponent has suggested that he's not adding grade. And I'm very wary of the commission taking an action that would require this builder or any builder, as a condition to get a variance, that they have to remove grade. That's, that, it seems to me, is a radical change. And I'm not, I don't see the...
Nobody's going there, though.
Well, I understand nobody's going there, but the more we talk about it...
You know, conformity with the, with the concept that if this house is supposed to be pretty much at the same level of the house next door, then I would like to see that, the effort made to actually do that and continue it.
I understand the concern, and I can assure you that our engineers and we have looked at this, and that the daylight windows was driven by the existing grades, and that we do not intend to increase the grade in any way on this site. But as a friendly amendment to the motion, if the motion maker would accept a friendly amendment, we certainly would support the idea that, consistent with new construction in Edina, that the grade of this home be no greater in first floor elevation than one foot as compared to the home adjacent to it. And maybe it could say plus or minus one foot. And, but that's, the grading that we contemplate in this particular lot is no greater than that. So that would be a latitude that would be appropriate in our mind.
So you're saying that the first floor level would be within...
Twelve inches.
Of the, of the first floor level of the home to the west?
Yes, I do.
You know, I think that's very generous. I think it's, because it's visually, it looks like it's about three foot difference. So I think that's very generous. In fact, I would probably even expand that somewhat in order to not mess things up too much. But, and it's just a matter of trying to also honor the concept of some continuity in the neighborhood and the concern of residents about the new infill construction and the height of it, and to have it just fit in a little bit better. And it's not, it doesn't rise to a policy level in any way or an ordinance level in any way. I'm just concerned about trying to keep it as sensible in appearance as possible in the situation. It is a small lot. It's all out of compliance. I mean, there's, the homes are going to be very close together as it is. So let's take some things into consideration that affect the way that house right next door to the other house was.
Commissioner Chair?
I know we're up here, but I believe that Mr. Shane Wetter noted in his presentation that the finished height of the two houses would be roughly equal. Is that correct? And, and we meant equal if we line them up on the same plane, or equal as finished products?
Let me show you why I think they're basically equal. And I don't have the rough elevation with me tonight.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
If you look at the elevation of the home that exists in 3709, the peak of that gable is a full two-story home, and that is virtually at the highest point that we see. And if you look at our concept, oops, I went the wrong way. If you look, oops, one more. If you look at our concept, it's more of a shallow roof pitch. It's Frank Lloyd Wright-inspired. If, if you said, we want you to promise that this peak will be within two feet of the house next door, and that the threshold of the front door will be within two feet of the house next door, I'm quite confident I wouldn't be coming back for something different. It just, we, these are going to be very similar in elevation.
The reason I raised that is I was hoping that would give some comfort to Commissioner Forrest in terms of her concern about the overall density of the property.
Absolutely. And just as all of you, at JMS, we want to do the right thing, and we believe we've spent, we, a great deal of time planning this home on this particular site. And we, we know that the grades are there, and our customer isn't going to want to have a steep driveway, or worse, a wet basement, or any of those things that are the result of poor grading or inattentive plan design. So we've done our homework, and I think we'll all be very proud of the finished product. Thank you.
Mr. Forrest?
I do like the fact that the roof lines here, it is a shallower pitch, and also they do pitch away from the street versus being just an end gable up close to the street. And that's a nice thing about this particular plan.
Other comments or discussion? If not, be ready for the question. A motion's been made and seconded to approve the variance as submitted with the subject of the staff findings and conditions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. The variance has been approved. There is a two-week, I think, waiting period that somebody can file an appeal on that. So barring any appeal, go forth and build. Thank you, Mr. Shane Wetter. Next item on the agenda, reports, recommendations. Are there any reports and recommendations for the good of the order? Commissioner Platter?
Yes, the ordinance update for the renewable energy that was just sent this afternoon to manager Neil and Kerry Teague as far as to bring it forth and do the city staff review on that. So that's the update on that piece of...
And that was, came out of the Energy and Environment Commission with the Subcommittee of U and Commissioner Potts, is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. Oh, it's good. Other reports? Okay, correspondence and petitions. I think we all received a letter from Mr. Shane Wetter. As a matter of fact, a copy of a letter he sent to Kerry Teague on the bishop's walk. I expect that he will be back again for a site review, or not a site review, a sketch, sketch plan review on that, on that area. You received the council connection. And we received, and I think we've already received some emails on this Tree City USA Award Program in Trees for Stormwater Management. On Thursday, the 8th of September, at the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum, there will be a discussion, it's sponsored by the University of Minnesota Extension. To the extent you're interested in attending that, please feel free to do so. Commissioner Fisher?
Chair Grable, did, did anyone respond to the request or the email from city manager Neil on, there was a committee spot or something that they were looking for, commission members?
Right. That was a request for commission members to, for all the commissions to send a representative to an interview for...
Human services.
Human services. I responded, I was not able to attend. I know a couple of others had responded to Kerry. I don't know if the, if any planning commission members responded positively to that.
Has that occurred already? Has that occurred already, or is it coming up? I think it's coming up.
Still coming up. So there's still an opportunity. Other comments from the commission? Commissioner Staunton?
I just wanted to update folks on the progress of the Grandview Small Area Planning process. Commissioner Fisher and I had a chance to appear at the city council's work session last night, and Commissioner Fisher will be appearing again at their regular meeting on Tuesday evening to update them on the progress. We are moving along. We have engaged a team of consulting experts and come up with a work plan for the fall. As some of us who have been working on this are saying, now the fun stuff begins. We've kind of done all of our organizational work and engagement of people in getting ready. But beginning September 21st, we will have our first community workshop. And then there will be a three-day community workshop in October, the 25th... And then there will be a three-day community workshop in October, the 25th through the 27th, and then a two-day community workshop in November, on the 15th and 16th of November. So more details will be coming out, but this is a time for members of the community to come out and engage in this process and, and really put the pencil to paper and figure out what the future of the Grand View District will be. So we're looking forward to it and hope you'll all engage in that process.
Thank you, Commissioner Staunton. Other comments of the commission? I would make the comment that during the summer at the, the council granted us attendance relief since we were, had our summer schedules planned, and then we agreed to go to two meetings a month, so we had an attendance moratorium during the summer months. But just as a reminder to everybody, that moratorium ends beginning, next, tomorrow, I guess it ends. So we will have two meetings a month, starting in September. The meetings did shift. I was going to ask Kerry, he's not here, to, to go over what the next meeting date is. I have that in my calendar back in my office, so I, I can't say for sure. But, was it the 14th? Okay, next meeting's September 14th, and then it would be the 28th, right here, same bat time, same bat channel. So, look forward to everyone's participation in the fall. And I do intend to meet with Kerry and tee up zoning ordinance updates, because we have to get busy on that process now. So we will be doing that. Is there anything else to come before the commission tonight?
District Chair.
Commissioner Staunton?
Am I correct in understanding that this may be Commissioner Stefanik's last meeting?
Is that correct?
I was going to ask you that.
I don't, I don't want to rush it if it is, but if it is not, I don't want to rush it. But if it is, I just wanted to thank her for her great work with us over the last year and, and give her our best wishes as she moves forward to other great things, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have been, I have to say in all honesty, that I think I was on the park board at the time when, when the commissions and boards started to have student members, and I was, I was a bit skeptical of the idea, to tell you the truth, but I had been very impressed with the quality and the participation that we have received on the planning commission by our student members. So, thank you, Commissioner Stefanik, and also Commissioner Rock. Thank you very much. Any other items to come before the commission? Anything from staff? All right, having gone through the agenda, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who's opposed? We are, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.